If anyone is planning to speak on an item, please get a comment card that's right outside the chambers. Thank you.
I think the first thing is our recognition is Katie.
Yes, and she is here.
Always happy to give the recognition, but always sad when, you know, she's not going to be serving on this board. And I will tell you, I've known Katie for a number of years, and I actually verified today, she was actually on the Planning Commission back in 94 through 98. So, very different city then, and she stayed with it and came back to us in 2023. And then stepping down, of course, to run for City Council. She also served prior to 94 with the Tree Commission, it was called then. Now it's the Natural Resource Commission. So what that shows you is just somebody that's always dedicated, has given her time to the city. I mean, it's always so difficult to find people that really, you know, care and want to put the time and give the extra time, because we all, it's hard to find that extra time. So you have been a real champion for the city in everything that you've done. And I also want to say, as a staff member, Katie is always really putting in the work that's needed to look at the items. And if she doesn't disagree with you, she has a conversation. You know, she's tough, but she 100% will listen and has always given us back great feedback, and we appreciate everything that you've done for us. So, thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And of course, would you like to say a few words?
Just about this Planning Commission, I have to say, I've been on a number of boards and commissions, as you've heard, but serving on this particular Planning Commission was really a particular pleasure, because I don't know that I have seen every single person on the Planning Commission come so prepared. And big kudos to all of you. You take your job very seriously. And thank you to Michael and Kathy. Y'all are just terrific to work with. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And unfortunately, we didn't have the plaque. We were going to get that too.
I know where to find you. I know where to find you.
You do. You know where to find me. So, thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you, Katie, for your service to the city. We enjoyed having you on the Planning Commission. You enhanced us greatly and made some great decisions for us. Next would be the procedures.
An individual requesting to be heard on a matter related to the purpose of the hearing must be recognized by the chair before addressing the commission. Upon rising to speak, the speaker must identify himself or herself and furnish a home or business address before proceeding with any comments or remarks. The board will allow the proponents a total of 10 minutes to speak in support of an application. Opponents will also be allowed 10 minutes to speak in opposition. Comments are accepted first from the applicant, followed by persons speaking in favor, then from those in opposition. Upon conclusion of any opposing comments or presentations, the chair will allow the applicant to offer rebuttal if any time is remaining in the original allotted 10 minutes, and the chair has the authority to add additional time if he feels it's needed. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you for joining us this evening. First item to consider, the minutes for the July 10 Planning Commission meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the Planning Commission for July 10, 2025. Is that right?
Yes.
July 10?
Yes.
I'll second.
Motion has been made. And properly secured or in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. The items that are considered here tonight, if afforded to council, will be considered on September 22, 2025. The Planning Commission is a recommending board. We facilitated a public meeting. Council makes the final decision. First item is CU-25-14 Image Studios Windward Master Plan, and Michael Woodman is going to present.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. The first item before you is a request for conditional use to allow spa services businesses to operate in Image Studios. Image Studios will occupy an 8,304 square feet suite, square foot suite, in the terraces at Windward Shopping Center. That business leases suites to a variety of health, beauty, and wellness personal service, services providers. The applicant is requesting the following spa services: massage, waxing hair removal, spray tanning, body treatment, body wrap scrub, body contouring, lymphatic drainage, acupuncture, facials, hydrotherapy, cool sculpting, and cellulite removal. I have the location map on the overhead. This property is located at 3070 Windward Park, Windward Plaza, and it's in Suites T and U. Property is Zone CUP, Community Unit Plan, and subject to the Windward Master Plan, Pod 4. Spa Services was previously added to Pod 4 of the master plan in 2013 with the approval of a conditional use for Hannah Day Spa. That business has since vacated the premises. It's no longer existing on that property. The comprehensive land use plan designation of the property is commercial, which does support the applicant's request. The Unified Development Code allows spa services as a permitted use in the Light Industrial Zoning District, and as a conditional use in the Community Unit Plan, O&amp;I, Office Institutional, Office Professional, Neighborhood Commercial, General Commercial, PSC, Planned Shopping Center, and the MU Mixed Use Zoning This is the applicant's site plan. So, the two suites, T and U, are located in the longer of the buildings. This is the former CVS building that the Activate Games will be occupying soon. And so, the highlighted area here represents the applicant's suites. So, Image Studios, as I mentioned, leases suites to cosmetologists, hairstylists, estheticians, and other similar personal service providers. This is a floor plan of the space. The space will be divided up into 40 different suites that will be leased out. It's important to note that the space is actually 8,304 square feet. However, the use spa services, in the definition, limits spa services to no more than 4,000 square feet. It is not the intent of the applicant to occupy every single suite, all 40 suites, with the spa services. In fact, Condition 1 will limit any spa services to no more than 4,000 square feet of the total 8,300 square feet of the suites. And so, the other suites will be occupied by uses such as beauty salon, or beauty shop, barber shop, nail salon, those types of uses. Those are allowed by right at the property. They're not the subject of the request tonight. It's the spa services that is the subject. The applicant is requesting the hours of operation on Monday through Sunday, 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Then, of course, we always, the spa services definition has a distance requirement of 2,000 feet from comparable businesses. This is the applicant's location here at the terraces at Windward, and you can see there are no other spa or massage businesses that are approved within that 2,000-foot distance. Looking at the review criteria for the conditional use, we found the use would be compatible with the surrounding uses, which are similarly situated in retail corridors and shopping centers. We believe the proposed use would complement the beauty services that are offered at the applicant's business. Applicant provided a citizen participation report indicating that they received no comments from the public, and the applicant actually provided several letters of support from existing businesses within the shopping center. The item was also shown to the community at the August 13 Community Zoning Information Meeting. There was one public comment from an existing business in the shopping center. It was Marble Nail Salon and Spa. That business is located in the same center, but that business is approved for a nail salon. And they did show up to the CZIM meeting to oppose the applicant, but I explained to the owner of Marble Nail Salon, after doing some research after CZIM, that that business was not approved for any spa services. And so, that business owner had agreed to remove any spa services from their website and not provide those services. So, they're only, they're limited to only the nail salon-type services. With that, staff is recommending approval of the applicant's request, subject to five conditions, and I'll go through those. Condition 1, spa services shall be added as a conditional use at 3070 Windward Plaza, Suites T and U, and limited to no more than 4,000 square feet. 2, conditional use approval shall be limited to Image Studios. 3, spa services shall be limited to massage, waxing, sugaring, laser hair removal, spray tanning, body treatment, body wrap scrub, body contouring, lymphatic drainage, acupuncture, facials, hydrotherapy, cool sculpting, and cellulite removal services. Condition 4, the hours of operation. And Condition 5 limits the window signage to no more than 10% of the window. We did want to mention on Condition 1, where we limit the spa services to no more than 4,000 square feet. And again, the applicant's total square footage of the business is approximately 8,300 square feet. If this request is approved, the city does have licensing requirements through our Licensing Division and Community Development. So, each of these practitioners that are providing the spa services will have to get a spa license from the city, and that's how we will track the amount of square footage that can be used, and limited to no more than 4,000 square feet. And that concludes the presentation. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you, Michael. Anyone has any questions?
The only question I have is, is it typical to have a spa service open from 8:00 to 9:00 p.m.? I mean, is that rather kind of a, I don't know?
I think it's pretty consistent with some of the other locations.
It is consistent.
So, we have the salons at, salons by J.C. at the Alpharetta Crossing Shopping Center here at Haynesbridge in Old Milton, go through a similar process, and I believe their hours are similar. I think more of the, maybe more like the hair salon might have hours that are not extended out as long, but I believe the hours are pretty consistent with other locations.
All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Just a clarification. Excuse me. Is that, I'm sorry.
In the application, he agreed to the hours of operation, but he wanted a keypad to come in after hours if they had an appointment-only situation. Is that off the table?
That wouldn't be necessarily off the table. I mean, as is stated right now in Condition Number 4, it states the hours of operation are Monday through Sunday, 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Unless we received complaints that they were in violation with that, we wouldn't know. If you felt, you know, that you would be agreeable to something like that, you may want to add to Condition Number 4. It says except for, you know, pre-scheduled appointments or something like that, or you can leave it as is. You may want to ask the applicant about that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? No other questions? Are you the applicant? All right, please come forward. I do not know you're in the spa business.
I was not. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Members of the Council. My name is Dile Oladigi, and I have lived in the Alpharetta area for about 18 years now. I work in the supply chain space. I've been in that space for over 20 years. I still intend to be in that space. So, this is a business that I, you know, a venture that we entered into earlier this year, just as a way to diversify, you know, and invest in the community as well.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant on the board? You had a question?
Yes, you heard the question before. Are you agreeing to the hours as stated? Or are you going to have an after-hours keypad to get in and out? We're just, it's just at odds.
Absolutely. The way I think about it, so first is, what I am operating is a salon suite operation, and in general, I do not provide any services. Rather, I lease space to independent beauty, health, and wellness professionals who provide services. And in most salon suites, they have 24/7 access to the space via, you know, an app or some other method of entry. They schedule their own appointments with their clients. So, for the most part, I have an existing location in Jones Creek, for example. When I go by there, there's really hardly anybody there after 9:00 p.m., but occasionally, you may have someone schedule an appointment for hair services, especially during busy weekends where folks are trying to get their makeup or some beauty services or whatnot prior to a holiday. So, there are occasions where folks will have services early in the day or later in the day. I am open to having restrictions placed on spa services specifically at the discretion of the council.
Just a quick, so in addition to that, though, would you be open to us taking a hard line on Condition 4, hours of operation, Sunday at 8:00 a.m. to, or Monday through Sunday, 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and no exclusions to that, whether it's through a keypad or whatever?
If it were not limited to spa services, I would want to reconcede, I would really want to understand maybe what some of the concerns may be, and are there other ways for me to mitigate the concerns you may have? Because it somewhat, I think, limits the flexibility that the professionals enjoy about being in a salon suite space. And when I look at other salon suites that operate around here, whether it's Salons by J.C. that Michael mentioned, it is very typical that they have unrestricted access to schedule their client appointments.
Outside of normal business hours?
Outside of normal business hours, that's correct, yeah.
So, you're just saying like the hair salon, the nail, you know, getting your nails done, but which is outside of the spa, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay. And then, as far as privacy, how, I mean, are the, are the?
The suites?
Yeah, the suites designed so that there's privacy and there's doors, so people?
Absolutely. Absolutely. MySpace is a very modern, very, you know, open space. Each of them have private suites, and especially the aesthetic suites are designed such that they have a lot of sound insulation for choir and services that are required. If you provide nail services, in general, they don't need privacy, but waxing obviously requires privacy, and we provide that by means of frosting on the glass doors and windows so that you have privacy for clients. Absolutely.
Thank you.
I have a fast question. Would there be any requirement for biological waste removal for any of these procedures?
I don't expect so.
Okay. And do you happen to already have some interested renters, or is this?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah. I have people that are already signed and leased. So far, I don't have any that require spa services, because I do not have my spa license yet. That's why I'm applying for that, really to provide the broadest range of services possible. It's a service to the community in that way, that one person can come in and essentially have a one-stop-shop where, maybe not on the same day, but over a course of time, they could potentially get five, six, maybe even 10 different services, you know, from nails, to brows, to facials, to aesthetic, to massage, to hair, right? And, yeah, that's the intent.
Okay. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Dile, you can live with what the condition is as far as the hours, and I agree, I'll ask the question first. You can live with what's on here as far as a condition today, and I'm going to follow up. The hour is, what, 8:00 to 9:00 o'clock?
Yeah.
You're fine with that, correct?
In conversation with Michael, when we put down the 8:00 to 9:00, the intent was that that applies to spa services specifically.
Right. And my point, because I hear where this is kind of going, listen, we have rules for restaurants here. We have rules for probably the grocery stores. But if occasionally, for whatever reason, they need to keep the doors open for 30 minutes, unless it becomes a problem, these are the rules. Let's try to stay within them. And listen, I get accommodating a client. I get it. You know, if I wanted to get my haircut at 8:30 or 30 minutes before, you know, as long as it doesn't become a complaint. If it becomes a complaint, then we're going to fall back to, hey, this is what you agreed on.
Sure.
But, you know, we're not, you're not going to promote, hey, we actually stay open till 11:00 o'clock every night.
Absolutely.
No. I know you, so.
And in reality, I do not really do a lot of, you know, marketing or communication to consumers. I do that to pros who want to lease space from me. And then the spa, and then the pros do their marketing, whether it's Instagram, website, or whatnot, with their clients and schedule their clients.
No. We can live by the hours and occasionally for, to accommodate a client or two occasionally. I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, appreciate it.
I didn't want to comment on that, too, because if you don't really have a hard opening and closing, then essentially, you don't, you can just come and go whenever you please. So, I do think it's incumbent upon whatever the outcome is of the decision here is that, you know, these are the hours, you know, for everybody. The shop opens at 8:00 and it closes at 9:00. I do think, well, somebody's in here at 8:45, you don't kick them out, but it's, it just can't be a routine thing. I can't, I don't even know who would go get their haircut or whatever at 10:00 o'clock at night, but nonetheless, the reason you have hours set is so that you have some defined parameters here.
All right. I think we are clear. If you have no other questions, I'll open these for public comments. You can sit for a minute.
Thank you very much.
Anyone in favor? Seeing none, anyone in opposition? None and none. Anything else you'd like to add before I turn these over to the board?
Not at all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Turn these over to the board for discussion and our emotion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve CU-25-14 Image Studios-Windward MP. I'll second.
Motion has been made and properly secured. And further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. It goes before council on September the 22nd. Thank you for your business in Alpharetta. All right. The next item on the agenda is Z25-04/V-2504 Midwell/Milton Avenue truck. Michael, you're up again.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. The next item before you is request for rezoning invariances to allow for the subdivision of a 1.34-acre property into two single-family detached lots, and this is located in the downtown. Rezoning is requested from S-U, Special Use, to R-12. Invariances are requested to reduce the front and side building setbacks, as well as reduce a stream buffer and impervious setback for a perennial stream. Have the location map on the overhead. The property is located at 0
you know, from nails to brows to facials to aesthetic to massage to hair, right? And, yeah, that's the intent.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Dile, you can live with what the condition is as far as the hours. And I agree, I'll ask the question first. You can live with what's on here as far as the condition today, and then I'm going to follow up. The hours, what, eight to nine o'clock?
Yeah.
You're fine with that, correct?
In conversation with Michael, when we put down the eight to nine, the intent was that that applies to spa services specifically.
Right. And my point, because I hear where this is kind of going. Listen, we have rules for restaurants here. We have rules for probably the grocery stores. But if occasionally, for whatever reason, they need to keep the doors open for thirty minutes, unless it becomes a problem, these are the rules. Let's try to stay within them. And listen, I get accommodating a client. I get it. You know, if I wanted to get my hair cut at eight-thirty or thirty minutes before, you know, as long as it doesn't become a complaint. If it becomes a complaint, then we're going to fall back to, hey, this is what you agreed on.
Sure.
But, you know, you're not going to promote, hey, we actually stay open till eleven o'clock every night.
Absolutely.
No. I know you, so.
And in reality, I do not really do a lot of, you know, marketing or communication to consumers. I do that to pros who want to lease space from me. And then the pros do their marketing, whether it's Instagram, website, or whatnot, with their clients and schedule their clients.
Yeah. We can live by the hours and occasionally for, to accommodate a client or two occasionally. I don't have a problem with that.
Appreciate it.
I didn't want to comment on that too because if you don't really have a hard opening and closing, then essentially you don't, you can just come and go whenever you please. So I do think it's incumbent upon whatever the outcome is of the decision here is that, you know, these are the hours, you know, for everybody. The shop opens at eight and it closes at nine. I do think, well, somebody's in here at eight-forty-five, you don't kick them out. But it's, it just can't be a routine thing. I don't even know who would go get their haircut or whatever at ten o'clock at night. But nonetheless, the reason you have hours set is so that you have some defined parameters here.
All right. I think we are clear. If you have no other questions, I open this for public comments. You can sit for a minute.
Thank you very much.
Anyone in favor seeing none and one in opposition? None and none. Anything else you'd like to add before I turn this over to the board?
Not at all, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Turn this over to the board for discussion and our emotion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve C.U.-twenty-five dash fourteen Image Studios dash Winward M.P.
Second?
Motion has been made and properly secured in further discussions. Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. It goes before council on September the twenty-second. Thank you for your business in Alpharetta. All right. The next item on the agenda is Z-twenty-five dash zero-four slash V dash twenty-five zero-four, Midwell slash Milton Avenue truck. Michael, you're up again.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. The next item before you is request for rezoning in variances to allow for the subdivision of a one-point-three-four acre property into two single-family detached lots. And this is located in the downtown. Rezoning is requested from S-U, special use, to R-12. Invariances are requested to reduce the front and side building setbacks as well as reduce a stream buffer and impervious setback for a perennial stream. Have the location map on the overhead. The property is located at zero Milton Avenue. The proposed density is one-point-five dwelling units per acre. This is an undeveloped wooded property. Has a perennial stream that runs along the north end of the property, separates the property from the balance of the Innovation Academy property directly to the north. The perennial stream is a tributary of Faux Killer Creek. And much of the stream buffers and impervious setbacks from that stream cover the property. The applicant purchased the property from Fulton County Schools in order to extend a sewer connection to two-forty-nine Milton Avenue, which is this property right here. And the applicant also owns that property. The comprehensive land use plan designation of the property is low-density residential, which does support the requested rezoning to R-12. As I mentioned, there are three variances. There's a variance to reduce the front setback from sixty-five feet to twenty-four feet. There's a variance to reduce the side building setback from ten feet to eight feet. And there is a stream buffer variance to reduce perennial stream buffer and impervious setback from a hundred-and-fifty feet to seventy-five feet. This is the applicant's site plan. And again, this property here is the subject of the request before you this evening. This is two-forty-nine Milton Avenue. This is not part of this discussion. It's shown here because the purpose of purchasing this property was to extend sewer through this property in order to get sewer to this property at two-forty-nine. So the applicant's site plan is depicting the one-point-three-four acre property being subdivided into two lots. You have Lot One and Two here. Lot One is point-six acres. And there is a building footprint of approximately a little over seven thousand square feet on that lot. Lot Two is point-seven-three acres. And the building footprint on that lot is about fifty-two-hundred square feet. There is a proposed sanitary sewer connection running to two-forty-nine that runs through the northern portion of the lot and through the remaining stream buffer. It's running right along the fifty-foot stream buffer line. And the applicant intends to jack and bore that sanitary sewer connection over to two-forty-nine Milton Avenue in order to limit impacts to the stream buffer. There's one tree of quality in the front setback along Milton Avenue that is required to be saved. It's approximately in this location. That is the only tree saved that is shown on the property besides the trees that will remain in the reduced seventy-five-foot buffer at the rear of the property. These are renderings of the two homes proposed on the property. The homes are proposed in the Tudor Eclectic style. They're two-story homes. The home exterior materials consist of a mix of brick, stone, and stucco. And the architecture has been reviewed by the city's downtown consultant, who believes that the designs generally comply with the downtown design regulations. With the stream buffer variance, our Unified Development Code requires that the applicant provide stream mitigation. And so this is the applicant's stream mitigation proposal. The applicant proposes a stream, or I'm sorry, a buffer mitigation area equivalent to two times the encroachment area. So the area that they are encroaching into the buffer, they're providing double the buffer mitigation area, which represents approximately one-point-three-four acres. That area would be planted with buffer enhancement landscape material, recompense trees, and live stakes on the stream bed. So you can see Lots One and Two here. The area that is depicted in green represents the buffer mitigation area. And you'll notice the buffer mitigation area is located on the remaining areas of Lots One and Two as well as on two-forty-nine Milton Avenue. And then it also extends to the other side of the stream on the Innovation Academy property. City stormwater engineer reviewed the applicant's proposed mitigation and does not believe that it will offset the impacts to the perennial stream that are proposed by the applicant. And just wanted to point out. So this stream runs from south to north. And it crosses under Milton Avenue, runs along this approximate area here, through this, I forgot the name of this subdivision here with Lynn's Circle, but through this area here before it reaches Milton Estates and Meadow Brook Hills. Those are the subdivisions with Meadow Drive and Brook Drive. Those two neighborhoods take the tributary for Faux Creek as well as Faux Creek. Killer Creek runs through those two neighborhoods. And we have had significant flooding in that area over the years. Also noted with the applicant's proposed buffer mitigation area, so this is a continuation of that buffer mitigation area showing the mitigation area on the Innovation Academy property, so on the north side of the tributary or stream. And did note that the, that area would not help mitigate the applicant's stormwater runoff located on the south side of the stream because their lots are located on the south side. We, the stormwater engineer reviewed this and believes that the reduced buffer could negatively impact water quality on the stream, result in increased velocity in the stream and the amount of water that's flowing downstream and impacting downstream properties. We reviewed the review criteria for rezoning in variance. The, what we found was the zoning proposal is consistent with the comprehensive land use plan designation of the property. However, the proposal requires variances, which would negatively impact, which would have negative impacts on Faux Killer Creek tributary and on downstream properties. The applicant did provide a citizen participation report indicating that they received comments with concerns over construction traffic and impact to a bee colony on the Innovation Academy property. Staff also received some public comments with concerns over the number of lots, increased runoff, erosion, habitat destruction, and increased flood risk. And then this item was shown at the July ninth Community Zoning Information Meeting, public comments with concerns over tree removal, construction traffic, and disruptions during construction. With that, staff is recommending denial of the applicant's request for rezoning in variance. That concludes the presentation. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
I do have a few questions relative to the stormwater. For some reason, my iPad cannot load the second application. I can see the first but not the second. It's all blank. But the first question is, did you say it floods or is it in a floodplain?
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
This, the property or the site, is it within the floodplain or it just floods when we have sudden rainfall events?
So the flooding that I was referring to was further north. I don't, I don't have any knowledge of this particular property or the adjacent property flooding. But further north off this sheet in the Meadow Brook Hills and Milton Estates neighborhoods that are just north of this subdivision here, that we have, there is floodplain in that.
Downstream of the site.
That, this is downstream.
Yes.
So it runs from south to north here. This is flowing towards Faux Creek, Faux Killer Creek, which sits up in this area here. So this tributary is flowing towards Faux Killer Creek. And there has been flooding on that tributary as well as on Faux Killer Creek in Milton Estates.
So the basis for denial essentially based on the application is that the stormwater impact based on two, two parcels instead of one increases impervious cover, not necessarily pollution of the stream but drainage. It's going to increase the rate of flow into the creek, increasing the velocity that can potentially cause flooding.
Yes, those are all factors that led to our recommendation of denial. We did not feel like there was a hardship for the variances. And yes, it's the, it's the potential impact to water quality as well as velocity and amount of water in the stream that could affect.
Was there hydrology report?
There was no hydrology report provided by the applicant. But typically, we don't receive that during public hearing.
And so the basis of the determination of the increasing velocity, there was any calculations by the stormwater engineer to determine what the velocity would be under what rainfall conditions? Maybe I need to ask the applicant that question.
Yeah, that was not determined by our city stormwater engineer. The applicant did not provide any information in that respect. But just from the pure fact that you would have basically half as much buffer that you have now could potentially lead to the negative impact to water quality as well as.
And the reason I'm asking is to really know the basis for that determination. So it's not looked at as potentially arbitrary, just an eyeball test. I'll wait to ask the applicant what analysis they did to determine that the mitigation that they are providing is sufficient. But I like to have a, you know, a factual scientific basis for that type of determination, so.
Understood.
Any other questions for Michael?
I've got one, Mr. Chairman. So Michael, just, I'd like you to confirm my understanding here as it relates to mitigation. You know, we always require mitigation of applicants and mitigation plan relative to stormwater management and stormwater impact. But can you put up your last slide that shows that with all the red and, yeah, okay. So if I heard you correctly, I think what you said is that while the applicant provided a mitigation plan, it was not for an agreed-upon area equal to two times the area of the encroachment slash impact. Did I, did I say that right?
So mitigating this proposed encroachment could involve providing two times the encroachment area in an agreed-upon location. It could involve additional things. That wouldn't be determined until we had a hydrology studies, until we received information about the existing condition of the creek in order for our stormwater engineer to weigh in and say this mitigation could potentially offset this proposed encroachment.
But this mitigation plan, right, I think I heard you say, is focused on the north side of the stream, whereas most of the impact would be on the south side.
Well, they show, they show a mitigation area on both the south side and the north side. So any area that you see in green here, and it's kind of hard to tell because they've got trees shown on here, but this line here, except for the red areas because that's, that's building footprint and driveway. But these green areas here are meant to be the enhanced mitigation area. And you'll note that those are portions of Lot One, Lot Two, and two-forty-nine Milton Avenue. I would say that there would be some concern about, you know, if these are to be areas that are going to be buffer enhancement area, that means these areas of the yard would have to remain in a natural state. They can't be mowed. You can't, you can't spray pesticides on them. They're intended to stay in a natural state.
Okay. Thank you.
Michael, quick question. Looking at each of the two proposed subdivided lots, the square footage, the footprint, looks to be well over half, as much as two-thirds of the actual land space involved. So that would, that's replacing percolatable land with impervious surface, right? But I also see on this design some stormwater management areas. I assume that looks like, is that underground detention?
Yeah. It might better be shown on the site plan. There's a little bit less going on here. But yes, thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Manley. I forgot to mention, on each of the lots, they will have, their applicant is proposing underground stormwater with those lots. So that's what you see here on Lot One and here on Lot Two.
By any chance, did the stormwater engineer weigh in on the degree to which those detention facilities would be adequate given the large proportion of impervious surface on the lots?
No, because there's no hydro.
No hydrology study, okay.
No hydro study available at this time. So we're not really looking at the size of these underground facilities. We were relying on the applicant to provide sufficient space on the site on this proposed layout.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Michael, there's a lot of moving parts. So we don't know about the retention, whether it could possibly mitigate the issue of these two houses.
The stormwater engineer has weighed in and said she does not believe the applicant's proposed mitigation would offset the impacts from this proposed encroachment.
And it's currently zoned for a single-family house on this one-plus-acre property, correct?
This property is actually zoned special use. The applicant purchased this property from Fulton County Schools. This property used to be part of Innovation Academy's property. And so it had that special use zoning, which is a zoning that's used for government facilities or schools.
So there could have been a government facility on this property?
The school board could have developed this property. The school board is not subject to our zoning code. So the school board could have developed this property with something, certainly they could have.
Given our former school board person who was here, they would, they would definitely want our approval in the past. And, you know, I, my question is, you know, it's not going to be a school board thing since they own the property. So what else could go there other than a single-family house? Or did these gentlemen just purchase a bunch of land that they can't build on?
So the future land use of this property is low-density residential. So the future land use would support a rezoning to residential. In fact, we've encouraged the applicant to amend this request to do one lot because we do think that one residential lot on this property could potentially work. It's supported by the future land use. And we believe one lot would have less impact to the stream buffers. Still probably will need a stream buffer variance.
Yes.
And still probably would need some setback variances because we would want them to bring the home as close up to the road to mitigate the impact on the stream buffer.
Yeah, there's no question. I have indigestion of, you know, I use the term massive reduction in setbacks. I have, I've had a problem with that in the past and it hasn't changed. And I'm not sure that it doesn't work. And I'm not saying I'm not going to vote for it because I want to hear them. But at the same point, you know, what if the setback reductions were zero? How would we feel?
Well, I think if they're asking for a setback reduction down to zero, I don't believe that that would be consistent with the other homes along this stretch of Milton Avenue. So when we are looking at setback variances, we are trying to look at the surrounding area to make sure that what is being requested is consistent or compatible with that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Over fifty percent is a little excessive. All right. Let's hear the, let's hear the guys.
Yeah, you did mention compatibility, which is another component issue for mitigation, we're looking at mitigating the water quality and water quantity factors, which either, you know, one, one lot may not have any impact on the stream or two lots with sufficient mitigation for quantity and quality would be sufficient. But that has not been demonstrated by the applicant, is what you're telling the board.
Correct.
So I think having, you know, just. So I think having, you know, justification for the level of mitigation for quantity and quality of stormwater is what is lacking according to Michael's presentation. So I think it's reasonable to wait until we hear the applicant, and we'll probably have additional questions, because they, they have a basis for how they came up with the mitigation, and then we will be able to, to advance the discussion a little further. Unless there is any other question, we'll ask the applicant to come and make a presentation. Thank you for being thorough as usual.
Hey there. Tori Young with Made Well Builders of Fine Homes, and we're located at 18 Cummings Street in Alpharetta. And then this is Bill Rouse with Onsite Civil Work. And most of what you guys are honed in on is way above my pay grade, so I am going to let Bill do most of the talking here. It's been a bit of a journey. I'm actually here on behalf of DWH Properties and then also for Lot One, Jen and Lee Diamond, Mr. Diamond's here. But obviously, the, the goal is to be able to build two homes here. The interesting thing about this property, as we look at other properties throughout Alpharetta, we would say that the average acreage is around half an acre. Lots, lots are around a half an acre. Each of these lots exceed that. Within our 12, your minimum width of lots is 80 feet, and these exceed that as well. They're very deep and, and, and large acreage there. Because of the size of the land, it has allowed us to do a lot of mitigation and plan towards that. We did have a, a number of sit downs with city staff and kind of talk through all the things. The stormwater representative has been, you know, pretty consistent with what she's said. We obviously have a little different view on that. We feel like we have some science behind that, and I'm going to let Bill speak to that. But anyway, I think I'm just going to stop there unless you guys have specific overarching questions, so we can get to more of the details of it, that once again is above my pay grade.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me tonight. My name's Bill Rouse. I'm with Onsite Civil, we're a local civil engineering firm out of Milton. Been fortunate enough to work with the city and staff on several different projects, not just residential, and have been doing stormwater management, site development for 25-plus years. I wish I was up here with Michael when you guys were asking all those questions, because I was just dying to jump in and answer them for you. Jill's recommendations from staff, I find them to be contradictory to what I would tell you as doing this for 25-plus years. There's, there's really two issues at hand. Those issues are impacted downstream properties, super important to talk about, and the other one is, do we negatively impact the stream buffer? Just before getting here today, let's start with, you know, issue number one. Do we impact downstream properties with this development? The answer is, if we go back to staff with a land disturbance permit application, we cannot. Absolutely not. So what happens downstream? We have to reduce the flows to less than what they are today. How do we do that? We do that with those stormwater management facilities that are shown on that site. So if existing flow today is 100, for example, if I go to staff with anything less than 100, I'm meeting the orders. If I come back with, I'm increasing flows and velocity downstream, they can't get back, and we can't get a permit. So to say that we're with this project, we would be increasing flows downstream, is just not accurate. Okay? So downstream properties, is there impact to downstream? Is this a flooding area? Absolutely. What is that a function of? 2006, there was a report done by Arcadis for City of Alpharetta that recognized downstream some of the things that Michael was talking about. It's an infrastructure problem. And what I mean by that is the pipes downstream are undersized. Okay?
Stormwater pipes? Did, did you say the infrastructure problem?
Yes, sir.
Pipes?
At, at road crossings, your, your stormpipes are undersized.
Okay.
Okay? So since the study has been done, there's a new detention facility on the Innovation Academy site. Okay? So that was recommended in here, all among other deals. But to say that we're negatively impacting, increasing flows downstream is just, is just not accurate. We can't, we cannot do that and get a land disturbance permit. Okay? So while Michael's correct, we did not submit a hydrology study, that was not part of the checklist. We have that data that we can present back. Okay? So downstream impacts, put my professional engineer stamp on it, not a thing. Okay? The second other big issue is, are we negatively impacting that stream buffer? I have some pictures, though, like I said, I, I went out there earlier today, again, walked through the spider webs, the cobwebs, and looked at that stream buffer. It's very sparse right now. If we went back to the mitigation plan that we're proposing, we're proposing dense mitigation similar to what was done at Will's Park, hopefully over by the basketball courts in the Equestrian Center. If you haven't been over there, dispute. And it's accomplishing everything that they wanted to do to protect that stream. Faux Killer Creek is an impaired stream segment. Hundred percent true. It's for bacteria and bio F, which says it doesn't support fisheries. Another reason for that is some sediment in the stream. Is that there? Yes, it's there right now, today. So our mitigation plan is to clean up the buffer that's there. And yes, we're going to take it from 150 down to 75, but we're going to increase, increase the quality of what's there. What else? There was something else that Jill said that I wanted to refer to. Downstream flooding, again, downstream flooding is an infrastructure issue. Whether this site was one lot, two lots, or no lots, the downstream flooding issues are there. That's not something that anybody here with this homeowner, this home, or if it does get developed, will change. But if this lot does get developed with one home, two homes, or a skyscraper, the city stormwater ordinance right now requires me as a professional engineer to reduce those flows. So I dispute some of the things that were said based on experience and also based on the city stormwater ordinance that wouldn't allow us to have that happen anyway. So with that, I'll open myself up to some of the questions that you asked before, if I hadn't answered them already, and, you know, I can get nerdy and talk about stormwater stuff all night, so.
I have a few, and thank you for, you know, clarifying some of the things we're asking. One, the, the extent of the mitigation, the revegetation or the improvements of the buffer, did you have, you mentioned that you have data that.
Have what, sir?
You said you have data to support the extent of that mitigation?
I have data to support the extent of the mitigation. So the, the mitigation that's been proposed is two times what's being impacted, and that was shown on another one of the reports. What I do have, the other data that I have is site inventory of what is there now. It's light underbrush, some sparse bamboo that's growing, pine straw, and quite frankly, trash. So with the mitigation plan, it's going to be cleaned up. Part of the data, straight from the Georgia Stormwater Manual that I brought with us, is how do you classify that? Coefficients and equations. Light underbrush coefficient is point four. Dense underbrush is a point eight. So if we come back, what that means to me, and what that means to that stream buffer, is that we're actually going to be slowing down the water by having an enhanced buffer through the mitigation plan than what's there now.
And the, the stormwater detention facilities will be sized later, they are not sized now based on any, any data, no hydrology report?
So we did preliminary hydrology, yes, but as part of the checklist application for rezoning, it wasn't a full hydrology report. So what I do have and what I do know is, this has been preliminarily sized. What I can't tell you is hundred percent, it's done. It's not done. But, but what I will say is, city ordinance will not allow development without reducing those flows to what's existing.
And we understand that. Any other questions? I don't want to dominate the questions here. Yes.
Todd, give me one, you had one before.
I'm good right now.
Okay.
Thanks.
I have a, it's a rank amateur question, but as we discuss slowing down water, we're also, also proposing adding to the amount of water that's going to seek the flow rather than percolate into the ground. So if we're slowing down water and it's going to be retained, do we have enough retention to prevent this from becoming the flooding area?
So, so what happens with this stormwater management facility is that we collect the stormwater, the difference between what is existing and what we're proposing, and store it in that underground system, and release it at a rate that is the same or less than it is now. In addition to that, what we also do is rate runoff reduction to go ahead and keep the flows that we're leaving the same.
Okay. I'm concerned about the situation that we seem to have in increasing frequency now, heavy rains, heavy persistent rains over long periods of time.
Okay.
To where you end up with much more water hitting the surface to start with.
Sure. So I love the analogy, and maybe this will help everybody, is those underground systems are like a bathtub. So it depends on how big your bathtub is, or your hot tub, or your swimming pool, and our outlet control structures that we designed are designed for the one-year storm, which is the real frequent ones that happen, or all the way up through the 100-year storm. So once in 100 years, these systems are designed to keep those flow rates below what they are today. So we run the gamut from quick pop-up shower all the way to the 100-year storm.
So they can accommodate the volume as well as the.
Yes, ma'am.
Actual speed. So if it's underground detention and your goal is also to reduce sedimentation, how exactly, this has always been something I'm unclear about, how do you clean sediment out of an underground detention facility?
How do you clean it out of it?
Yes.
Vacuum trucks.
Okay, how often?
It's a yearly maintenance schedule.
Okay, so this would be performed by whom?
It, it's performed by the homeowner.
So it's on their dime to do this?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
I see.
And this, this is, this has changed. So the stormwater ordinance for City of Alpharetta is quite robust, okay? So these underground systems didn't happen 10 years ago. And they're also plus or minus $100,000 systems that these individual homeowners, not a lot of them, know what's coming. But your ordinance has made it such that they have to be there.
Would there also be an ongoing maintenance requirement for the, the stream bank mitigation?
You know, ma'am, I don't know the answer to that, but I can get back to you on that. So I'm the civil engineer that can talk stormwater, but for that part, I'm not sure about that.
Okay.
But part of the city ordinance is there's a stormwater maintenance agreement that's recorded in the courthouse, and if the property sells, it transfers with it.
Okay. So what we're saying, though, is that there would be a significant burden on each of these properties to be responsible for the stormwater detention and potentially for maintaining the stream bank.
There's a significant burden on every person that builds a new home in Alpharetta because of the ordinance that requires ongoing maintenance.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? I hear none at this time.
I thought there was more speaking. Anyone else speaking?
Can I just say one more thing, as it pertains to the neighboring property, Innovation Academy? In the report, it was referred to that they were concerned about their bees. In the conversation that I had with folks from Innovation Academy, they had mentioned that they have like bee colonies over at the, at Innovation Academy as part of one of their classes. And at the public hearing or public meeting, we just kind of talked through the possibilities of that. And so one of the things that we had put forward to them, and they liked it, was as we're removing all these invasive species within the creek banks, that we would also be intentional about adding things that foster good health for, for the bees. So we're actually accommodating that, you know, feedback and comment that came from them. And I believe that we have that actually cited within the landscape plan and the mitigation plan that we, that we put forward. So just wanted to mention that.
I have a question. What's the target pricing of these two homes?
You know, everything's expensive and it, and it springboards from the, the land costs, but, I mean, they'll be in the, I mean, obviously several million dollars each of them.
And.
Which is consistent with what's going on in the downtown area right now.
Did, did Michael say that you owned the property next door, too?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you don't have any plans to develop that?
I do. We couldn't develop it until we had access to sewer, which is what started this whole odyssey. When I purchased that land, there was an informal agreement with the school, and they were, the previous owner was in the process of getting a sewer easement. And when I purchased it, that kind of shifted, and they were not going to grant a sewer easement. So something in a project that was ready to go and should have started almost two and a half years ago, I think we're coming up on almost three years ago, November will be three years, and I thought I would have been off to the races like just any month, is still sitting there idle with millions of dollars tied up, you know, because we couldn't get access to sewer. And they kind of held our feet to the fire, and our only option was to pay an exorbitant amount for land to have access to the sewer. And that's the other part of, or other side of the story.
Yep. Even if with all the mitigation, let's just say, let's put that to the side, you're still asking for a significant front building setback reduction, right? From 65 to 24, and a significant perennial stream buffer and imperious setback from 150 feet to 75. I mean, that's pretty significant.
It is, but I would say it's consistent within the city of what's, you know, what's been happening as long as certain criteria is met. And so that's been our focus, is to try to meet and exceed that criteria to where it can actually work. And the adjacent property that you asked about, it has to be up, you know, closer to the road, just because of the way the, the creek pinches in. And so these homes will, you know, you know, be closely aligned with, with that one, and just create a really nice, like, welcome into the city. Well, it's definitely our focus to, you know, to make them amazing. I mean, like I said, Mr. Diamond's here tonight, you know, he's put a lot of time and energy into, you know, wanting to be here and, you know, central to the city, and so you have our assurance on that, that it will be a beautiful greeting to the city.
All right, thank you.
Is, is the existing home that is unoccupied, is that on a septic tank, or is that on city?
It's on septic.
Septic tank?
Yes, sir.
Is that a service line, or is it going to be dedicated to this city or county, the sewer?
The sewer, you know, as of right now, I think we have said it's going to be private. We're, we're open to, to either, so that's not something, a hill we're going to die on. But as of right now, it was just going to be private access for those.
How far is it from the creek or the stream?
Ask that again.
How, how far is the sewer?
You know, the, the current sewer runs right, right along that. I don't know exactly, 50, about 50 feet. That's the proposed, but it will be jack and bore, so any plants, trees, things like that, that, you know, we're trying to save can be saved as a result of that. It's less invasive, and that was one of the things that we had, you know, agreed to do with city staff. Yeah, I talked a little.
Yes.
About, so we worked with staff on whether it would be public or private sewer, and the Arbor's comment was, if it was dedicated to Fulton County, they would come back and clear the trees through that sewer easement if they so chose. So as Tori said, it, we're open either way, and the benefit to making it private is it maintains some of that existing tree canopy, and Fulton County couldn't come in and cut down all the trees. So that was a.
That's one of the reasons I was asking that question.
It's a question.
From the stream bank. From the stream bank to the sewer, and how deep is it going to be approximately? How deep approximately?
Between five and seven.
Five and seven?
Yeah.
It's the, the reason is whether it's going to affect the critical root zones for the trees out there, but it's sufficiently deep.
The reason to do the jack and bore was to minimize the impact to the critical root zones. So, so now all you have is a 12-inch casing pipe that's going through that critical root zone. That's, that's the whole reason for the jack and bore, to save those trees.
Thank you.
It is more expensive, I mean, just as a point, but I mean, obviously, it, it has its trade-off, which is to save the trees that were going to be impacted otherwise.
Did, were you advised that if this was approved, what the conditions are?
We have seen the conditions, and I believe most of them are in line. We did have a question about one, one of the conditions.
Speak now.
Take it away.
Thanks. The one condition was the six-foot beauty strip and the eight-foot sidewalk. Seems to be somewhat inconsistent with, with what's along Milton Avenue now. So we were hoping, and the reason that it was proposed as four and six on the plan is because we just did another development for another residence just up the street at, oh, gosh, was it 3, what, it wasn't 379 Milton, what was, was Jen Kane's house? Right up the street. It was a four and six-foot sidewalk. And if you, all along Milton Avenue, it varies. There's, there's a two-foot beauty strip, five-foot sidewalk, and there's a four and a six, but there's not a six and an eight anywhere else along.
And the eight foot is what?
Say it again, sir.
What was the eight foot?
The eight foot was a sidewalk recommendation.
You know why we do that, correct?
I'd love to hear.
We have handicap people in the, in the city.
Sure.
And the eight foot provides that.
Okay.
Provides that opportunity for them, and it's something that we've, you know, we try to do here.
Sure.
And matter of fact, other than what you just pointed out, most of the city now is about eight foot.
Okay. There, there's, along Milton Avenue, there's not. That's why I was just saying.
You're in an interesting part of Milton Avenue.
Sure.
As we're going out west. So I, I understand you're not in downtown Alpharetta, or what I consider downtown, the downtown area.
Sure.
So what could you live with?
Say it again, sir.
What could you live with?
The, the item does have, with final approval by staff, so...
Yeah.
What, what we had shown, what works with our site plan is the four and six, which was consistent with another development plan that we did just up the street. That would be our ask.
I've got a quick question. They said there was a specimen tree somewhere along the roadway. Is that going to impact location of that sidewalk and/or buffer strip?
You know, I'll, I'll hand it to city Arbors. He's come up with a clever floating sidewalk detail that can put sidewalks over specimen trees and not impact their critical roots zones. So we're not typically too concerned about that.
And then, next question I have, I'm going back to 249. Because on your M1 plan, you're including that in your calculations, and so has that property been, has come before this council to get the same buffer reductions and same mitigations?
It has not. Once again, it's a storied past where I purchased it from actually someone who, a landscape architect who does a lot of work with us, so there's definitely trust factor. But he had gone through the process with city staff on all of the, the things, and kind of where he was when he handed the baton off to me was that we had to have proof that we could have access to sewer. And at the time, because of the conversations he had had with the school, he just said, hey, it's just a matter of getting the, the easement in place, and since you're purchasing it, maybe you should take the baton now, and you can work out the final details, you know, with, with the school and get that signed off. So, but when that became something that they were no longer going to entertain, it put us into, you know, to this. But everything else within the confines of that house, you know, we were to a point that, you know, everything seemed to check out. And I, and I will, I would just tread cautiously there because it wasn't a signed, sealed, stamped deal. Scott's not here to represent that. I wasn't there, so I don't want to, like, overstate it, but my full understanding was we were on the home stretch, and the home stretch was get proof of access to sewer.
So, so we're really looking at these two lots plus 249 is, in essence, what we're taking a look at? Because you're going to come back to the same mitigation, you're not coming back to the same stream buffers or mitigation.
So as I understand it, the 249 has been submitted to city staff already and has received comments, and we're not seeking reduction on that. Did I say that correctly?
Can we go back to M1? Can we get to sheet M1? You, you put it up earlier.
I think one of the other differences on that lot...
Can you get close to the mic? We couldn't hear you.
There's an existing home on that lot.
A hundred, yeah.
Were you looking for the location map?
It was, it's just, it was just labeled M1 in the lower right-hand corner. It was M1. Not that one, no. The one with the red, the colors that we were looking at.
That showed the mitigation.
This one?
Yeah, that one right there, because that shows the house down there on 249. And it's within all the mitigation boundaries in this, you know, we'd be looking to do the same thing. But that's just going to be a completely separate submission, is what I'm hearing.
It is. And, and the house that's shown on there is the actual house that's being proposed that city staff has already made a round of comments on. And as Tori mentioned, again, maybe a little bit of loose liberty, because I wasn't the engineer of record on that project, but I think they were down to getting sewer access.
Okay, but the site calculations are for three lots, not the two that we're here for tonight. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Someone following, in the, in your pictures, just right up here, you've got Will's Park. Is there a specific reason why you wouldn't have the Will's Park pictures put in here? You know, the Will's Park stream mitigation pictures?
Well, we, we felt like because that was, I mean, for, that was the trophy child of the city, and I know we were all very proud of all of the effort that went into that. So rather than reinventing the wheel, we just, and this was part of the collaborative conversation with staff, we said, hey, we're going to kind of look towards that, and we're going to replicate that the best that we can on our site to keep a, a level of consistency that the, you know, that the city felt like was a good standard. Yes, sir.
If there are no other questions for the applicant, I have a couple for Michael, and then we'll open it up for public comments. Thank you. You have opportunity to rebut if there are any comments. Michael, how does the requested stream buffer variance differ or compare with others that have come before the board and commission from 150 to 75?
Yeah, so we've had a variety of different stream buffer variances. Each one is looked at based on their, their conditions and what's going on with that particular condition. I know the applicant has had stream buffer variances approved at some of the location, one notably would be the stream buffer variance on the two lots that were approved at the corner of Cricket and Coming. That stream was reduced by 50% on one side of the stream. However, that, that request varied or was different from this request, in that that request, that, that portion of that stream had been piped on the first United Methodist Church property to the west of it. So that stream had already been impaired by being piped for quite a distance, and this was a small portion on the applicant's property that was reduced, but it was a different condition than what we see here.
I understand. And since the stormwater engineer is not here today, I'm going to ask you the next question. Since the basis of our recommendation for denial is on impact to the stream, and I assume, this is a big assumption, that is, both the amount, quantity, and velocity, and water quality, would there be sufficient, or can there be a demonstration of sufficient mitigation for that that would allow you or the department to recommend approval? If that was demonstrated, that it would be done, this would not be inconsistent with what we have done before?
So I really can't answer that question. That would really, I would defer to our stormwater engineer, Jill Bazanet, on that question. What I can say, though, is that we have a request for rezoning and variance in front of us, and we have a review criteria for both of those. The review criteria for a variance requires a hardship, and there are three review criteria, and we do not believe that the applicant has proven any of those three review criteria to, that there's a hardship. We believe the hardship is a financial hardship, and that is not one of the criteria that we can review.
Thank you. All right. I'm open this to public comment. Anyone would like to speak in favor of the application? I see none. Anyone in opposition? No one. Anything else you'd like to add before I turn this over to the board? Okay. And the board can ask questions during discussions. I turn this over to the board for discussion and our emotion. Just to start the discussion, these are some of the charging applications that we, we have to, to consider, and we, we have had several of these for several years of inaction. And when we get a, a recommendation for denial, we still have the responsibility for, you know, evaluating and assessing the application and hearing the staff and the applicant and the public, in which case we didn't hear the public, and then making the best, you know, recommendation to council. We can either recommend denial, we can recommend approval, we can defer if we believe that there is in a way that the issues that we have or the questions we have can be resolved, or we can tipple the application. So that's the, the charge for the board to discuss and make a recommendation to city council.
I don't have a recommendation at this time, but just as a follow-on to what we've been talking about, about creek mitigation and stormwater runoff, and as a builder, you've heard this over and over, but so many times we've sat here and people downstream have said, hey, what's going on upstream that's flooding? But I do think having some kind of storm mitigation or creek mitigation is a very good thing to restore the stream. I do wonder about the size of the buffer, but I do think you have a good idea, you're going in the right direction on that.
I do appreciate the, the efforts to address the stream buffers themselves and the fact that we had a pre-existing situation where there is flooding downstream, probably a longstanding problem. But I, I do have concerns about introducing this much impervious unto these two lots while also trying to wrestle detention facility and sewer and save trees at the same time. It seems like we're trying to accomplish an awful lot in a very small footprint. For one, I've, I've been sitting here trying to figure out how you run sewer close to existing trees, love saving the trees, but tree roots have a decided habit of seeking and invading sewer pipe. So I would be very concerned about the long-term efficacy of doing exactly that. I'm also concerned about the long-term efficacy of a stormwater detention facility that is going to be incumbent on a homeowner to maintain so that we don't end up with a worse problem downstream. I just, editorially, it feels like a little too much and too small of a space. But I, I do appreciate the efforts of the developer to address the stream bank itself and to help preserve and protect it. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead. You want to go first? Good. Well, I'll step out, out on a limb then, get something started. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Z-25-04/V-25-07 made Will Milton Avenue track with conditions noted by staff. All 13.
And a second? Motion fails for lack of a second.
Mr. Chairman? I like to make a motion?
Yes.
I like to make a motion.
Or discussion. There can be further discussion if the board desires to discuss it before a motion is made. And if there is none, you can make a motion.
Can I follow up on the discussion?
Yeah.
Okay. The, the purpose of it is, in my opinion, and there's already a house there, there's going to be houses there. It's what you want. I made it very clear, I am not a fan of the massive setbacks. I understand that there's probably reasonable setbacks, and I don't think at this point what the applicant has proposed is reasonable, in my opinion. However, there will be homes there. And, because it's not going to be school buildings, and just because of where the location is, and Milton High School was around here for a long time, Fulton County had it, and they didn't do anything. Same thing with the school that's there now. But at the same point, I think especially what is going on along that road, this is consistent with what's going to happen up that road, all the way to, you know, probably 140. And with that said, this would be a start. They still have to meet with city council. I do not want to reduce the sidewalks. I really don't want to reduce flower thing, because I think as you go up that road, it becomes consistent. And so that's why I made the motion to approve. And that doesn't mean that none of this can't be adjusted by us or a council in a couple weeks. But if someone wants to, to put single-family homes in Alpharetta, that's kind of a joy compared, detached, single-family homes, which we haven't seen in a while come in front of us. I think that's something that we need to try to work with the applicant, if possible.
Well, I would agree with that, Commissioner, but I would disagree on the fact that I don't vote on this as a start. I vote on what I think is, what is in the application. And they didn't meet the three criteria. Yes, I think that they can put homes on there. How many is the question? And is it the right number of homes? So that's how I feel.
I don't disagree with what Jill said there. Like I said, whether it's a home or two homes, it's going to be homes. Or home.
I'm generally sympathetic with, you know, the, the issue of how much in terms of density, two homes do meet the future lot use plan of, in terms of density. We have a, it exceeds half an acre per, per lot. And with respect to mitigating stormwater impacts to receiving streams, you can't provide sufficient mitigation to counter any increase in, in, in flow and potential water quality. Scientifically, we can do that. So when you go to the LDP level, they have to demonstrate to staff that they are meeting the, you know, totally the intent but the spirit of the code of the ordinance. You are correct that, you know, there is going to be development here, is there going to be one home, and how large is that home? Oh, they're going to be... Or there gonna be two homes in the future? We don't know. What I know is that we meet future land use and we can also mitigate sufficiently in terms of quantity and quality based on what is eventually approved by staff. So I'd generally be in favor of this application for those three reasons. One, you want to, the, the sympathy I mentioned in the past is that property owner does have a right to develop their property. And, and with respect to their requirement of, you know, the stream buffers, I've done stream buffer determinations and it's not a perfect science. It's, it's mostly based on consensus at the legal level when laws are made. And I go by case-by-case basis, looking at a lot of things, topography, water quality, type of development upstream, downstream, to come up with the right size of buffer. So I would be in favor of it based on those reasons. That I don't want to penalize the property owner for things that can be mitigated if it can be demonstrated at LDP level that they do meet the requirement of the code and they have provided mitigation along the streams that is sufficient to do that. So I, at, at this point, as I was asking the questions about on what basis, was the denial, is it quantity and quality? Was there any data reviewed? Was there hydroge report? Obviously it's not required at this point, but it is gonna be required that they demonstrate that they comply with the code requirement when they come for an LDP permit. So that's why I am on this application and I'm happy to listen to more discussions and the wisdom of the board.
I would say at this point, the question of how many homes will end up being on this property is probably the, the paramount question here. Because all things being equal, yes, the density is consistent with the surrounding area and that's great if there were no mitigating factors like the stream cutting diagonally across these properties and creating some serious issues. Also, it, the notion of trying to address the stream by moving the houses hard on the street, which is inconsistent with the other streets in that area, or the, I'm sorry, the other homes on that street, to me raises a concern because that would be changing the character and I think possibly detracting from the character of that section of the street. So for me, it's a question of not the density necessarily, but the conditions impacting that density. That say it should be developed certainly, but should be developed in such a way that is more ideally suited for that lot, that unique lot.
Just for purpose of discussion, can we, can it be argued that the developer is constrained by the stream and the configuration of the road to where they are squeezed enough to where they would have to have a variance from the stream? The question is, well, if they can have a variance, how much? What would be acceptable? If we agree on that one, is it a hundred, is it seventy-five? And on what basis do we determine what that variance would be? Or what mitigation efforts would be sufficient to approve an application? Those questions in, in, you know, combination or holistically can, you know, in, inform the board's decision because sometimes we make a decision here and it sets a precedent for future applications. And we've had several of them. I mean, even, we had a lot of discussions on Thompson Street when they started this, the development here and several others that are similar to that. So when I look at an application, I'm looking at what have we done before? And is there a very compelling reason? And a compelling reason means one, we can't miss. It hits you on your forehead that is so obvious, the decision is straightforward.
Well, one of the things that Michael mentioned, that one of the compelling reasons to put two homes on this is the fact that, you know, they have a hardship because of what they paid. That's not our problem as a city. And they didn't meet the three criteria, which Michael laid out pretty extensively. So I, I kind of feel like we keep discussing this, but they didn't meet the criteria. That's my opinion.
We have to make a recommendation to the board, uh, sorry, to city council. So if anyone is ready to make a motion, we'll be happy to.
I'll make a motion to deny Z dash twenty-five dash oh four dash slash V dash twenty-five dash oh seven, Madwell slash Milton Avenue track.
Motion has been made and properly secured and further discussion. Hearing none or in favor, please raise your right hand.
Favor of the, favor of the motion to deny.
Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. The recommendation is for denial. Again, city council will make the final decision on, it will be considered on the twenty-second of September. Anything else the board would like to consider tonight? Hearing none? The meeting is adjourned.